Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for joining this special credibility in neuroscience session. I'm Joe Clift, head of policy and campaigns at the BNA. I'm delighted to be joined today by the winners of the BNA's credibility prizes. We have speaking Marta Topor, our student researcher prize winner. Amy Orban, winner of our individual researcher prize. And representing our team prize winners camarades, we have Caitlin Hare and Malcolm MacLeod. Each of our three talks will last around 15 minutes with five minutes for questions after each talk, followed by a broader Q and A session for the rest of the time allowed. You can submit questions at any point during the talks via the live discussion box using the question tab. I'm aware that plenty of you attending today might be new to the BNA's credibility in neuroscience campaign. So to just give you a very brief flavour of it. We're supported in this by the Gatsby Foundation and we're focusing on three areas to help ensure that neuroscience research is robust, reliable, replicable and reproducible as possible. And these are equipping all neuroscientists, regardless of career stage, with the skills, knowledge, tools and processes that they need to make their research as credible as possible through changing the research environment in which neuroscientists operate. So that the drivers for neuroscience research also try, also encourage the most credible research. And finally, a most relevant for today's session, supporting a shift in research culture within neuroscience so that credibility is recognised, valued and welcomed across the neuroscience community. This session is sponsored by Sage Publishing, who publish our society-owned journal, Brain and Neuroscience Advances, which has incorporated a number of practices aimed at strengthening credibility. From using the credit taxonomy and open science badges to publishing registered reports, pre-registered work and null results as well. And you can find out more about the journal after the session by visiting the BNA Journal tab in the festival platform. This is the first year that the BNA has awarded prizes for credibility in neuroscience. And these were awarded to recognise outstanding efforts to make neuroscience research as credible as possible. Either directly through leading by example in the course of their own research or through efforts aimed at helping the neuroscience community to do this. Our first speaker, Marta, is currently a third-year PhD student at the University of Surrey, studying action control processes in developmental motor disorders. Marta has implemented open science incredible practices in her own work and has also actively shared techniques with others and supported the broader open science community. She's also the founder and president of the Surrey Reproducibility Society. And she'll be talking on shaping research culture around credible and collaborative practices, a bottom-up approach. Welcome, Marta, and over to you.
Thank you very much. Right, okay, so first of all, I would like to say a big thank you to the British Neuroscience Association for awarding me this prize. I feel very honoured and I would like to express that it's really important to me and the community of open credible researchers that early career researchers are recognised in this way. And hopefully this will be encouraging to other scientists and researchers to view credibility in neuroscience as an important way to pursue our goals in research. So firstly, I would like to mention to you that you can absolutely take screenshots and share my slides if you want to. I will have some links throughout as well, linking you to different resources and information. So I'm not expecting you would be writing this down on a pen and paper. You can take screenshots and save it for later if that is useful for you. Let's see if I, oop, skipping too fast. There we are. Okay, so I will start off by telling you about early career researchers in open science, which links back to what I said at the beginning, that this great support that we have from BNA is really appreciated. And as my title of the talk suggests, I will, I will draw your attention to this bottom-up approach. So the real impact that early career researchers can have on the culture of credible research in neuroscience. So ECRs here, I highlighted the bottom word, but this is not to say anything negative. It's just to make you realise that early career researchers sit in a very special place in the career trajectory. So we are there pretty much, let's say, at the bottom, developing our skills and still learning towards our future careers. There is a great talk by Anne Sheal from Einthoven University of Technology, and I gave you a link here. It was presented at an international meeting of the Reproducibility Journal Clubs last year. And Anne there explains very nicely about the early career researchers at the frontline of open research, incredible research as vanguards or cannon fodder, highlighting our special place in academia overall and the possible costs and vulnerabilities relating to applying open research practices. So early career researchers are progressive and idealistic and closest to the data. And we are learning our skills that we will take with us throughout the journey of our careers. And this is a great opportunity for us to learn how to best apply the practices that will help us to create work that is reliable, transparent and will have a big impact in the future. But that doesn't mean that this comes without a cost. The main cost that we have been able to identify for early career research is the fact that those different approaches that we use for credible research require additional time and effort. They expose early career researchers to criticism and scrutiny, which creates worries about credibility and reputation going forward, which slightly sounds a little bit opposite to what you would expect credible and open practices to do. But in fact, if we think about sharing all our data, all our analysis and making this available for people, this makes it open for any mistakes, any errors and scrutiny that could impact our careers in the future. So those are the worries of people and possible stoppers of applying open reproducible and transparent research practices. So in my talk, I will tell you quickly about ways to mitigate those risks in a way or take a different perception on those risks. So you can see my open science costs card with cross-out points in the bin here. This is not to say that those costs and vulnerabilities disappear completely, but we do have a different perception thanks to peer support and collaboration. And they, from worries, they become something that we just discard and open research and incredible research becomes the centre of our work. So firstly, I will focus on supportive community. I've identified three areas of creating and facilitating supportive communities for early career researchers, but also researchers in general. So for building a space for researchers to share and support one another. And this is through learning about the issues, what stops research from being credible and open and reproducible. And then going forward to training on new skills and applying those in our own work. And then lastly, sharing the knowledge through either direct outputs of our research or through teaching and advising others. So I will go through all these points that I have here in the boxes quite quickly. But if anybody wants me to express, explain everything in a bit more detail, I can do that in the question and answer at the end. So firstly, learning about the issues and creating a community to engage in discussions is very valuable and very important. Because this is not currently something that is being taught to us when we train to be researchers. So organisations such as the Reproducibility Journal Club that has taken over internationally. There is also the Open Science Special Interest Group that I have been involved in in the past. And this is part of the organisation of human brain mapping. And I also founded the Surrey Reproducibility Society, which is a very local organisation for the University of Surrey that brings researchers from different departments and at different career stages to discuss those issues and identify how those issues apply in their own work as well. And you can see other examples in this box. You might or might not be surprised to see Twitter there. But Twitter has been very great for me as a source of information to find out what issues there might be and how they might be solved. Then going forward for training and new skills. So once we identify those issues, we want to gain knowledge about how to improve our work and what we can do in our own research to improve it. And so you can of course attend courses, online courses or in-person courses, which might be now postponed due to the current circumstances. But there are plenty of resources online that you can also access. And making those resources accessible and available and even telling people that they exist is very important. So I have a few links here for you. For instance, within the Surrey Reproducibility Society, I created a very long independent learning resources page where researchers can visit and find information about different solutions for making the work more open and reproducible and credible. There is a great pre-print by my colleague who explains that we don't have to apply all of these solutions all at once and we can take it in steps. And then I have also worked with the UKRN to prepare a primer on the sharing code and making it available for other researchers to use. So all those things are really great and it's important to highlight that they exist within our communities as part of the support journey. And lastly, sharing the knowledge, as I mentioned, we can share the direct outputs of our work for methodology, analysis, code, data. But we can also engage in training and teaching and highlighting how to implement those different practices. And here I engaged with FORT, which is a great community that creates teaching resources for making sure that we can explain the information about credibility in research and convey the different solutions in different circumstances for researchers. And so this, if you can see, they're in the corner. I have the open science costs card and I crossed out the time and effort. This is not to say that the time and effort doesn't, it is not a problem here anymore. But because we interact so much and we share those solutions and we help ourselves each other in training and applying those methods and we can consult, teach one another. This is really a great way of supporting and supporting the application of those solutions in our work. And so in my experience, I normally advise my colleagues on R, statistics, open code, reproducible analyses, pre-registration, evidence synthesis. And I also try to make my teaching resources openly available. So apart from that page on the Surrey Reproducibility Society Independent Resources section, I also make all my R workshops freely available to access as well. So I hope that this gives you a little overview here for how we can support one another. And there are plenty of different communities that we can get involved in. And if there aren't any in our immediate network, then it's a really great opportunity to start something even for discussions, to encourage researchers to think about how to make their research work more credible. And the second part is the collaborative culture. So here I crossed out the next two parts on my open science costs card. And that relates to the criticism and worries about credibility and reputation. If we approach other researchers and discuss issues regarding credibility in our work, we often find common issues and barriers that we might want to try and find solutions for together. So that makes it more efficient, but also through inviting researchers at different career stages from different areas of research, we gain variety of perspectives. And that exposes us to scrutiny and criticism early on. And it's constructive and it helps us to make our work as credible as it can be right from the beginning. And this is a great way to really get involved, get motivated and make a real impact right from the beginning of our projects. And very important part here is to make sure that our projects, which become collaborative, are also designed in a way that encourage inclusivity and accessibility so that we can gauge this variety of perspectives. And one example of this is the non-interventional reproducible and open systematic reviews project that I co-lead with my colleague Jade Pickering. It's a really great, well, I want to say it's great, but it's great because of the experience of it at least. And I hope that it's going to make a huge impact because we developed tools for researchers who work with non-interventional projects. And we try to help them to apply evidence synthesis in the work in a way that caters for non-interventional research as all the traditional tools are normally designed for health research and interventional research. So we are trying to again support those researchers and give them advice. And we take a variety of experiences and perceptions on how to, how to do this. And we have a lovely Tiptok that we gave at OHBM last year about this specifically for neuroscience as well. So you can check it out. And lastly, just thinking about the long-term impact, so the up part of the bottom-up approach. Impact is a scary word and as researchers, we always get worried about the impact of our work. But actually credible research really helps us through this. And all the work that we do within our communities for increasing credible research has, or we hope will have, a great impact for research culture and research in the future as a whole. So this means that researchers and early career researchers will have easier access to solutions to make the work more credible. It also means that research process will be accelerated. And here I can give you a great example of a probabilistic learning task that I created as one of my, to execute one of my projects. And I had an email from a student from Australia who somehow came across it and they were really interested in using this task. So they didn't have to spend all this extra time on creating this task. They knew it was validated and already used in research. And I was very happy to share it with them to use it and speed up this process to facilitate their work. So this is amazing. And hopefully we can easily evaluate the findings in the future if we have access to materials and open data, open code, so that we can learn about the, the real meaning of this work in the future more efficiently. So healthier research culture is also something that is very important at this stage. Because by creating collaborative and peer supportive communities, we, we hope to build an environment that really encourages real support and community and move away from this sort of rat race, pressurised environment there. So I hope that this looks very promising for you and encouraging. And lastly, I would like to just say a huge thank you to all colleagues and collaborators who work for open reproducible, incredible research, everybody whom I have worked with in the past. So I have the two communities that I coordinate, the Surrey Reproducibility Society and the Neurosystematic Reviews Project on the top, but also the ones in the bottom are the ones that I have interacted with and contributed to in the past. There are plenty others and there is a chance that in whatever specific area of research you are or in your institution, there are other researchers that you can connect with and help to build this supportive community. And thank you to everybody for listening. I hope this was helpful and I'm happy to take questions, if there are any.
That was great, Marta. Thank you so much. Please do send in any questions that you've got for Marta or any, anything that you've heard from, from the talk. Just to sort of begin with one from me. So you've helped to build a supportive community at the University of Surrey with the Surrey Reproducibility Society. There might be some researchers that perhaps don't have those routes of access in their, in their own institutions. Would you advise sort of taking a leaf out of your book in terms of creating something at that institution themselves? Or is there enough sort of out there in terms of the broader supportive environment at the minute that can sort of provide that for them at the minute?
I think that there is definitely a lot sort of across the different institutions that individuals can get involved in to learn a little bit more as well. And it's possibly a good idea early on to see how those groups operate and what sort of support is given. And then this is how I got involved first in a few groups and discussions. And that really motivated me to create something at Surrey and to support people in my immediate network. I don't necessarily think that everybody should, pardon me, everybody should go ahead and create a society or any official groups. It might be just a group of a few friends, colleagues from the same department who start with some discussions and they start, then start inviting colleagues from across different departments. And it might be the case that organically something more official will create. Just one thing that I can maybe reflect on is the fact that by me contacting colleagues and creating something small at the beginning, that was really a crucial part for me to see that there is enough interest and sharing those responsibilities with other people for running the society and making sure that this continues and we have clear goals and plans. This has been absolutely key because all the pressure then wasn't just on me. And it wasn't like the society was taking over my life in the end.
Perfect, thank you. One question, let's come in. How important is top-down versus bottom-down, bottom-up change? So are early career researchers really at the minute, they're doing too much on this? And, and really sort of require a bit more help from, from sort of a top-down approach?
So one of the things we have reflected on before is that the real change will not happen in research culture as a whole without the top-down support. So the top-down support is really, really crucial. And it's not something that should be seen as only for early career researchers to do all the work and the change will just sort of magically happen in 10 years or so. So the top-down is definitely very, very important. But saying that, as I mentioned at the beginning, the early career researchers are there now doing the work and learning the skills. So they need to be encouraged to take on those credible, open, reproducible, transparent practices in their work. Because this is their time to take it further for their careers. So I think that sort of linking those two together and appreciating the importance of both sides is very important. And one thing that I can also reflect on with regards to our journey at the Surrey Reproducibility Society is that we have amazing support, top-down from the university. We have a great open research group and we collaborate very closely with them. So we do pretty much everything to bring the university as a whole to be more open and credible across all sides. So definitely if a small group of early career researchers gets together, it's a great idea to get in touch with more senior members of the university to see whether there is anything that the institution can do as a whole to move forward.
Thank you. Just looking, had one question in. How might the BNA further help these goals? I imagine that, that, that could be addressed at both of us. Well, I'll put that to you first, Marta. How, how do you think that the BNA could further help you in doing the work that you're doing?
So I don't know if I can answer the question, what else can BNA do? I can just definitely appreciate what BNA are doing now. So through those awards, absolutely, it's, it's so important. And I'm very honoured, not only because my own work has been acknowledged, but because this is being brought to the wider group of researchers who now see that this is something that should be acknowledged and is in this important and priceworthy. So I think that's first of all, great and giving a space for communication about this discussion. That's, those are amazing things. And I think if BNA can continue creating a space and a platform for researchers to discuss those issues and bring them at the forefront through campaigns like you do, that's definitely a great solution and it will help a lot.
Thank you. That's, that's really, really good to hear. So we will keep, keep doing what we're doing. I will move us on now. Thanks, Marta, to our next speaker, Amy Orban. So Amy is a research fellow at Emmanuel College, Cambridge, and a visiting research fellow at the MLC Cognition and Brain Sciences Unit in Cambridge, where she is also chair of its Open Science Committee. Amy's research on adolescent mental health and its intersection with digital technology use embraces credibility throughout with many pre-registered papers, open code and a stage-one registered report. She's been a champion for open science and meta-science throughout her career and has done a huge amount of open science teaching. And it's this final aspect that Amy will be speaking to us today. With her talk, not just black and white reflections on teaching good scientific practices. Over to you, Amy.
Thank you, Jo. Thank you, Marta, as well. I loved hearing about your experience about the community. And I guess, yeah, I want to reflect on what I've done since I've, you know, moved from being a graduate student now to being here at the University of Cambridge. And what I thought would be interesting to talk about is reflections on the, I lead a 16-hour course about open, no, it's not called open, it's called reproducible behavioural science. And I've been doing that for two years now. And I've learned a lot in the process, which I think really merits reflecting on. And I wanted to use this time to think through some of the things I've learnt. And I think they can inform broader cultural change that, for example, the BNA is so wonderfully supporting through this prize scheme. So keep up the good work. So the, the course itself was first kind of commissioned by John Simons, who is a professor in the Department of Psychology at the University of Cambridge, who had the idea that with my move to the university, we could start some sort of graduate training in open reproducible science. And so I took the chance to actually create what I felt I missed during my own graduate career. And that's both a course that has lectures, has actually eight one-hour lectures. It has eight one-hour seminars and it does hands-on training between the two of those as well. And the course is taken by not just psychology students, but also students in psychiatry, the MRCCBU where I sit, education, linguistics, history, philosophy of science and criminology. And so it has attracted a really wide variety of students. And I think that's what caused some of the reflections I will talk about today. I'll focus them on three things that I've learnt. So the first So the first is that oftentimes education focuses on knowledge and methods and not on culture. And I'll discuss that a bit. The second is I think that longer educational campaigns like my course allows us to move away from just pitching open science to people. And I think that's really worthwhile. And I'll I'll give you more detail about that as well. And thirdly, I think we're going, we're teaching a newer generation of researchers who come from a very different um background than than we do in terms of robust, credible and open science. And I think that that leads to us probably having to approach these communities in different ways and able to kind of engender long-term cultural change. But I'll start with the first one. So um when we teach undergrads, for example, about science, I often think about Merton. So Robert Merton was a sociologist of science who wrote very well about kind of what science is and what scientists do. And he wrote, he he defined science in nineteen forty-two in one of his articles. And he actually had three different definitions of science. So the first definition is that science is a set of characteristic methods. So some methods that we apply to create, well, to kind of do science. The phrase do science means, you know, we're doing something, we're doing some sort of methodology, whether that's standing in a wet lab, pipetting different things in different kind, or if it means pushing people into fMRI scanners, it's all the process of doing science. However, there's also another definition of science, and that's the body of knowledge that accumulates through these methodologies. For example, when our government currently tells us that they're following the science, they're not meaning the methodology themselves, they're they're meaning the body of knowledge accumulated by the process of science. Um, and then the third definition is that actually science is way more than just the methods and the results. It's the culture, the morals that govern what it means to do science and govern what we do. Um, and so by by doing science, we're doing something beyond just applying the methods to create the results. We're doing it in a specific way. We're um kind of focusing, for example, on the credibility of a result or other people's result. We're sceptical. Um, we kind of engage in something he calls organised scepticism. So when we, let's think back to about education. So this talk is supposed to be about education. Um, and this is, you know, I give undergraduate supervisions in in this office. Um, and then when we teach undergrads, we mainly focus on the knowledge, so the second definition. You know, we teach them what we found out in neuroscience, we teach them the structure of the brain. In psychology, we might teach them different cognitive mechanisms. But naturally, part of undergraduate teaching is also about the methods. We might have practical classes or stats lectures and and stats practicals. When we move up to graduate education, I think the balance becomes more fifty-fifty. We start focusing more on the method and training the researcher to do the research rather than just telling them what's been done before and what we know. However, the crucial oversight here is that the cultural element is still very much removed from what we actually teach. Nobody really sits us down and tells us what actually the the morals and and the values of science are. And with this lack of teaching, it means that students that come into graduate school, for example, starting their PhD, they teach themselves what it means to be a scientist. And the way that, you know, we teach ourselves is by looking around us um and seeing what other people are doing. What are other people's values? How are other people kind of engaging with the incentives? And so at least personally, in the institutions I have worked in, I've seen that researchers really start focusing on those incentives that are often not aligned with what it really means to do science. Uh, we're getting better, but they're not completely aligned yet. And I think that at that point, there's a crucial moment where more education about culture and morals and values and more reflection, so fostering that critical reflection can actually cause that massive change. Because instead of having to relearn after you've kind of learned from your, from the people you see in your department as a graduate student, we can actually teach it from the bottom up. So when I teach my course, for me, it's a lot more than about knowledge. It's a lot more than about methods, you know, teaching somebody how to use GitHub or how to do version control or what stats to use. There's something critical there about being able to teach culture. And that can only be done through critical reflection, which is why the course is fifty-fifty divided between the lectures and the seminars, when students can actually discuss, they can question what, you know, they've learnt. They can disagree with each other and with myself. And I feel like the most of the learning actually happens in the seminars. Um, and it really complements with the learning about the knowledge and the methods. So to kind of educate the scientist in terms of Robert Merton, you need all three of those. That brings me to my second point. So if we want to foster critical reflection, um, then we need to teach it in a way that enables critical reflection. And like many of you probably, I've engaged with open science mainly myself, kind of teaching myself as as Martha has shown. And that's often through watching talks, you know, listening to podcasts, following people on Twitter. But I feel like often those educational opportunities are often kind of one-hour sessions or twenty-minute sessions when a person tries to convince you that what they're doing is really, really good and that it's better than what's been done previously. You know, we've, it's one of the most kind of life, kind of career-changing moments for me was listening to Chris Chambers' talk about registered reports that he did when he went to the University of Tubing, where I was for a research visit in my PhD. And the talks all go through a similar, you know, kind of saying the problem, saying what people are doing now, which is not good, and then saying what could be done, which is better. And so it's really as as open science sales pitch, as I say. And I think that's really, really important. We need those. However, in terms of educating scientists from the bottom up at that graduate level, if we have the time, we can move beyond that and actually teach much more critical reflection about methodology. Because we all know that no method is perfect. Um, for example, if I teach pre-registration to my students, I know that that first pre-registration is really hard, especially if they're in labs where there's not enough support, where they might be the first person doing a pre-registration. That first pre-registration can often go wrong. And so if I paint a, you know, an amazing picture of pre-registration solving all of the world's problems without focusing also at times about these things that might be difficult about pre-registration, um, that can kind of, well, I I don't think I'm educating properly. And I think we need to just kind of in education, in a engage in that critical reflection about open scientific practices just as other scientific practices because of three things. The first is their own experience, you know. If I teach my students properly, they'll go out and want to apply certain things and they'll experience the problems firsthand. So there's no reason for us not to engage in these things. Um, for example, about certain difficulties about pre-registration or whether, you know, pre-registration is good for all types of research, for example, in exploratory research. The second is that a lot of them will either be supervised during their PhD or or later on by people or collaborate with, but people who are more sceptical about certain scientific reforms. And so what I'm preparing them for is for those discussions where they say, I've decided or I want to do X in a certain way. And then to really counter the counter arguments around why they shouldn't be doing that. So to set people up to actually argue well about open scientific practices, we need to teach them both sides of the argument. Um, for example, another example I want to talk about is reproducibility. So this year I started having quite a lot of qualitative research students in my class. Um, and throughout the course, I would say quite flippantly things like all research needs to be reproducible. Um, however, for certain qualitative researchers, they feel like none of their research is reproducible in the strict way that we talk about in the open science community most of the time. Because you can't step in the same river twice. You can't be the exactly the same person at exactly the same space and time, talking to exactly the same people and having the exactly the same experiences to create exactly the same inference. And so again, we need to enable this grey zone between black and white to really allow us to foster critical reflection. And thirdly, I think to what we want is students who can go out and be original and find the best solution to things. So if we're telling them always the best solution is always going to be X, would, as something that we know probably is wrong, then we aren't doing them a favour. So for example, um blinding is a practice that can complement pre-registration or or kind of do similar things than pre-registration. And so by teaching that and and talking about why some people do that versus another method that can really allow them to think more critically about that as well. So this is a long-winded way of saying that if we have longer courses, we can go away from just saying you should do X, Y, Z because this is really good and this and everything else is not very good to a more critical reflection about all these methods to enable people to become these critical researchers, which we want them to be in terms of research culture. So I think we need to foster that by also thinking about our own methods and allowing those to be criticised, um even if they're part of the scientific reform. The third is that we have a new generation and I don't have a huge amount of time to talk about this. But a lot of my students have surprised me in certain ways. A lot of them do know about the replication crisis already, some in different amounts, and they they understand certain issues. They also grown up in a scientific environment where this conversation is already present. So they they're not in that space where it's kind of us versus them um or where things are quite kind of manic or where there's not yet things like the BNA prize for for open research. And so they've really grown up in a different scientific ecosystem in terms of better scientific research practices. Something that sort of struck me that I often put blog posts on my reading lists, which the reading list for this course you can find on my website, um amyorban.com. So you can have a look, but I put certain blog posts on there, which really spurred me on as a PhD student. You know, why we all need to do some certain thing or why the incentives are rubbish or, you know, people criticizing other researchers like Amy Cuddy um for certain research practices. For me, that really got me part of this community, made me want to change. It was a real kind of motivator for me, feeling like I was part of something. However, a lot of my students react very negatively to some of the more strongly worded blog posts, the us versus them rhetoric. I think that's because they've grown up in a very different system where the lines have kind of been blurred a bit. Um, where they want to build more community, where they think about respect and kindness a lot more and where a lot of the blog posts that I put on because I thought were really, really good um are seen as as disrespectful in certain ways. And so I think we need to think about how we integrate them as a new scientific generation into this, um, the conversations we've already had and to allow them to feel part of it. So to summarise, the three kind of points I raised is that education isn't just about knowledge and methods. And if we want to educate credible neuroscientists, we need to teach that research culture, that moral compass, those values. And we can only teach that through critical reflection, you know, I can't give them a worksheet to tell them what to do. But we need to kind of be an example of that as well by critically reflecting about a lot of different things and allowing them to raise questions about, for example, things that I've done or others have done in the process. And because open or credible or robust science isn't just a checklist exercise, it's about who you are as a scientist and you need to have that moral compass to to take you further uh in that. And so through the education and through the creation of a new type of community in the next couple of years, I think we need to empower our students to build the signs they want to see um and not tell them what that science is. Um, and we do that by educating not just the methods and the knowledge, but also the culture as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy, for that. Um, great, great talk. Um. Let's um go to questions and just a reminder to uh submit any questions um via the questions tab. First question, Amy, is do you have any tips on how to engage with colleagues who don't think reproducibility is a problem in basic exploratory research? Because it's exploratory, so why would, why would anyone want to reproduce it? Um, surely reproducibility is only important in clinical research. Do you have any thoughts on that?
Um. Exploratory research. Uh, so I think that, um, in engaging colleagues more generally, I think it's important to understand what motivates people um to do certain things. And people have different motivators and as a PhD student myself, I found it very interesting or or helpful to understand what certain of my collaborators were motivated by. And I could pitch certain things to those motivations. So for example, I did, I worked with somebody who maybe didn't care as much about reproducibility, but cared a lot about the journal. And so my kind of pitching that by learning are, I could create really pretty graphs, which were necessary to kind of succeed in that peer review process because there were no non-pretty graphs in those journals. I think for exploratory research, we need to, I think reproducibility is is key in terms of allowing us to build any body of knowledge. We need to be able to reproduce uh what we find. Naturally, in my talk, I already said that things do become a lot more difficult in terms of reproducibility in different fields. So it really depends on where you are. Um, it's like, I think some level of reproducibility we all want, you know, whether it's that a hundred percent uh is the next question. But I don't feel like I've answered the question really. Um, but I think anything what you want to build on, a big research endeavour on, you need that strong scientific foundation and reproducibility as part of that, you know. So you know that's not, that's cement and not sand, for example. Um, but yeah, if anybody else hasn't has an idea, um, I'd love to hear it.
We can maybe sort of bring this out in the uh in the discussion later. Um, another question that's come in, so um, any thoughts or messages in response to the view that reproducibility is an issue in some fields, often thought to be a social sciences thing, but that not being a problem for neuroscience, which is what uh is sometimes heard?
Hmm. Yeah, I think, I think that's a really interesting thing because it's something that comes up quite a lot, um, also with who kind of ends up attending the course or what department buys into it. Um, so I think for me, I see that the the social sciences have been really part of this because they had a kind of, two thousand and eleven is like their year of horrors where, you know, somebody falsified data and everybody found out there was the, you know, nothing. There was a paper that really showed that nothing replicates. There was something else, um, which I don't remember. Oh, oh, and there was a really good paper that showed um Simmons and Simmons, uh False Positive Psychology, which showed that you could more or less make anything significant. And I think that was really potent in driving the conversation in the field. You know, you have somebody showing things don't replicate, somebody showing why, you know, really great accessible paper showing why. And then a third kind of a big scandal about somebody falsifying data. That really led to very honest reflection. And I do think that in fields like neuroscience is where it it feels a bit more removed, that impulse has been less. So I think we do need to do more work and, you know, there is amazing work out there already showing that there's a problem. The cancer reproducibility um studies in cancer biology, for example, um, which is not really, it's not neuroscience. But I mean, in in kind of the more wet lab disciplines. Um, but I think we need to understand that that impulse was less. And so we need to figure out a way to bring over those, um, that problem warm. And I think that it's really those, that accessible paper, False Positive Psychology, if you haven't read it, do you read it? Because it's a, it's not just, it's a hallmark for how you write about that there is a problem. Um, so I think we both need to do work on the ground, kind of convincing that there's a problem. But I think that education through, for example, the BNA or or, for example, here at Cambridge, we think about how do we educate grad students, that's might be the, if that impulse doesn't arrive, you know, and that big chunk, everything bolted together to really wake people up. I think that education is the second best uh thing because it kind of goes up um and it trickles through. But yeah, again, I I'm, I think that probably the BNA has much better understanding of how we can have that impulse. And maybe we can talk about it in the in the panel discussion because I feel like there's a lot to think about about how we can do that.
Great. I think that um that nicely sort of takes us on to our our third and final talk. Thank you, Amy, for answering those questions and we'll join you again for the uh for the discussion. Um, so coming on to our final talk. So lastly, we have um Caitlin Hare and Malcolm MacLeod. here today representing the Camarades team at the University of Edinburgh, which stands for the Collaborative Approach to Meta-Analysis and Review of Animal Experimental Studies. This team was founded in 2004, originally aiming to address translational failures in preclinical stroke research using systematic review and meta-analysis, but has since broadened their scope to other diseases such as neuropathic pain and Alzheimer's disease. The team pioneered the use of the systematic review as a method to interrogate the reproducibility of preclinical research studies. And they've also campaigned and advocated for changes in the reporting of preclinical research in order to improve the validity and value of the preclinical models of human diseases, most notably working with Nature Publishing Group and PLOS One to revise their editorial policy. I believe it's you, Malcolm, to speak first, so I will hand over to you.
Well, thank you very much. And I'm delighted on behalf of the Camarades collaboration to be receiving this prize. What I wanted, I'm going to give you a little bit of what we've done, and then Caitlin's going to tell you the much more exciting stuff about what we're doing just now. And you could sum up really what we've done in one slide. This is our road sign from Wales. We have similar lunacy in Scotland. It says no entry for heavy goods vehicles, residential site only. And then underneath, in case presumably any sheep can't read English, it says the same thing in Welsh. Except what it actually says is, I am not in the office at the moment. Send any work to be translated. And there lies the history of translational neuroscience for many of the diseases which caused so much problems for our society. Now, shortly before Camarades was funded, a much younger looking Malcolm, accompanied by Lindsay, was sent from Edinburgh to be a neurology trainee in Australia with Jeff Donan. And Jeff had the guy who ran his basic lab research, who was called David Howells, originally from Wales. And Jeff and David were trying to select drugs from the animal literature to take into trials in humans, so you could give them to humans in the back of an ambulance, and wanted my advice on how best to choose. Because I'd come from Edinburgh, where Peter Sandico had a great background in cohering collaboration and bringing evidence to clinical research. So we said, well, why don't we do some systematic reviews? And since we said, why don't we do some systematic reviews, some have been done. Firstly, helped by the fantastic Emily Senna, who came to us to do an undergraduate student project in 2005, and then traversed the globe doing a PhD between myself and David. And then over the subsequent years, by many more PhD students, undergraduates, colleagues, and now friends from other institutions. And the main point in all of this is that it's been very much a team effort, each of us bringing different strengths. And I should say, we all bring our weaknesses as well, but we compensate for each other's weaknesses. This is the basic approach, systematic review and meta-analysis. And I just wanted to show you quite how powerful it is. This is a paper from 1988, looking at trials of Tamoxifen on mortality in early breast cancer. And there's 61 individual randomised controlled trials here involving almost 30,000 patients, but not one of them shows a significant effect. When you combine their findings mathematically using meta-analysis, you find an improvement in survival of 20%. So a huge clinical benefit obstructed from view by virtue of there being very many, very small studies, which is really a pretty good description of where neuroscience is, where basic science is generally. So we started to look back then about how we might translate things from animals to humans, from the lab to humans, found over 1,000 compounds tested in animals and models of stroke, 600 tested in animal models, 400 improving outcome in those animal models, of which almost 100 had been tested in human stroke, of which one clot-busting treatment with tissue plasminogen activator actually improved outcome in human stroke. And we'd get three interventions, stroke unit care, decompressive hemicranectomy, and aspirin, which improved outcome, which had never been near an animal study. So depending on how generous you're feeling, the failure rate here is either 99.9% or 100%, but it's no good. And that led us on a journey to try and understand why there was this translational difficulty, and it's been great fun. So in 2008, we reported that effects in animal studies, reported effects were higher in non-randomised and in non-blinded studies in animal models of stroke, over the next five or six years, showing similar effects in animal models of multiple sclerosis, of Parkinson's disease, of Alzheimer's disease, and the list gets longer and longer and longer. And then led by Emily and working with others, showing publication bias and selective outcome reporting bias in the in vivo neuroscience research literature, which led to an overstatement of effect sizes of about 30%. Then moving forward, showing in 2015, low prevalence of the reporting of measures to reduce the risk of bias across in vivo research, across journals, regardless of impact factor, and in some cases, and the bias reporting was worse in journals of higher impact. But also in institutions in the UK identified in the RAE as being exemplary in the performance of in vivo research, where 68% of them didn't report any of randomisation or blinding or power calculations. But it's important not just to show that there's problems, but to try and fix them. In 2009, we published good practice guidelines for in vivo stroke research. In 2012, contributed to the Landis Guidelines for Transparent Reporting Across the Life Sciences, which were then incorporated into the Nature Publishing Group Guidelines for Authors. And then in 2019, we evaluated the impact that that had had on the quality of publishing in in nature journals, and it had had a positive impact. There had been arrived guidelines published in 2010, and I wailing and distressed that the publication of these guidelines hadn't led to an improvement in reporting very much. And I proposed a solution, that authors simply be told to complete an arrived checklist. So led by Caitlin, who's going to speak next as first author, we did a randomised control trial of what happened when you insisted that authors completed an arrived checklist, and it didn't do anything, made no difference to the quality of reporting. And that led last year to the revision of the arrived guidelines. And now this year, we're building on earlier work, developing tools automatically to ascertain risks of bias in groups of papers, so that we can inform research improvement activities at the level of an institution, at the level of a funder, at the level of a journal, by taking hundreds of publications and getting machine learning text mining tools to ascertain whether or not they report, for instance, randomisation. So what have we learned, what have I learned along the way? Looking back, some of our early work, and back in the day, it was my early work, was pretty poor by current standards, and I think that's all right. And it's important to acknowledge that previously things weren't great, because that provides the motivation to change. The success that we've had has been due to the remarkable efforts of remarkable individuals contributing to a shared and collective endeavour. And none of this would have been happened if those individuals had worked alone. Some of the work that we've done has been pretty well-funded. Most of it has been poorly funded, and some of it's not been funded at all. And in response to another disappointing email yesterday, I realised that we've not had any major funding from a UK funder for, I think, four or five years. But research improvement doesn't thrive in the unfunded margins of our research community as being something that people like me do in our spare time when we're already established in our positions. It needs to be core and central to be effective and for change to be based in evidence. These concerns need to be front and centre of what we do as a neuroscience community. And now Caitlin's going to tell you about some of her current work within the Camarades group. Caitlin?
Hi, everyone. So I'm going to talk about where we're going as a group and some of the more recent approaches that we've taken. So we really want to continue to improve credibility on a larger scale than we've been able to before. And as such, our reviews are getting bigger. So this is a graph of our systematic reviews over time and the search results we got for those reviews. And what I mean is the number of papers we identified and that we'd have to go through and extract data from. So you can see at the start, 2003, 2004, we were focusing on a particular drug within animal models of stroke. And then more recently, 2018, I started my PhD and I looked at animal models of Alzheimer's disease, and I wanted to cover the whole literature, and that's kind of the way we're moving forward. So because our reviews are getting bigger, our scope is getting wider, and there's also more studies to find over time as well, because the literature is always growing. And in order to help us do this, we needed to find new approaches to make preclinical systematic reviews quicker to perform, to make them more collaborative and more accessible to the wider preclinical community, so they can continue to have a real effect on translation. There we go, back one. So the first thing I wanted to mention is our systematic review facility. This is an online platform to support high-quality preclinical systematic reviews. It was funded by the NC3Rs. So SERF is, it allows you to just register online. You can create a project and you can start working with other people as well. It fully supports collaborative projects. It's full of guidance and resources for how to perform a high-quality systematic review. And you can just, you can just set up a project and ask whatever questions you like and whatever data you would like to extract. So it helps you to select relevant studies that you would like to include in your review. And it also allows you to extract more detailed study information and numerical data from the included publications. We'll go next. So the second thing I'd like to talk about is our new approach to tackling these these big massive reviews of whole fields of information. And these are our systematic online living evidence summaries, or SOULS projects. And the aim of these projects is to collect all the relevant information across an entire field. So in this example, this was Alzheimer's disease studies in laboratory animals. And we want to collect all this information and extract some high, high-level information about those studies using automation tools, and then display them visually in an interactive web application for the entire community to use. So this, as I said, is an example in Alzheimer's disease. You might be able to see here, this is the number of papers published over time. I've got on the top there, I've got where papers were published around the world, and importantly, the reporting quality of those publications, we've tried to estimate as well. And as you can see, unfortunately, it's still not that great. There's not that many papers reporting a sample size calculation or blinded outcome assessment, et cetera. So one of the other aspects of this website is that you can look at the different transgenic animal models that have been used over time and see how many papers have been published in different models and what the reporting quality of those papers looks like as well. I've got very similar visualisations for interventions, different interventions that have been tested across animal models and different outcomes that have been measured as well. And the idea for this is that people can go onto this resource and they can very quickly get to a curated list of references that they can then look at, which contain, which are looking at a specific animal model within Alzheimer's disease that maybe tests specific treatments and look at specific outcome measures. So we're hoping that this resource can be really useful for accelerating systematic reviews within the preclinical space, because it cuts out the need for searching databases to find relevant studies and screening through those studies yourself. So it really speeds up the process. We're also hoping that it can be used by laboratory researchers who need to plan their next study, because they should be able to go on and quickly get an idea of what's been done previously and help guide their research going forward. And we also want to use it as a tool to benchmark research quality, so you can look at changes in research quality over time and see if there's some improvement taking place. I just wanted to also briefly highlight how we even get to this, this final web application, the work that goes into it. So we search across multiple databases. Normally, we search PubMed, Embase, Web of Science. And once we've identified relevant research, we set up an automated search. So some of this can be done programmatically to make sure that we get the most up-to-date information frequently. And then from that, because the same record is present across multiple databases, we have built an automated de-duplication tool to remove the references which appear multiple times in our dataset. Once we have our unique dataset, we then need to screen it for relevance. And we can actually train a machine learning algorithm to help us do this, so that we don't have to manually look through 200,000 papers ourselves, which is impossible. So then we can get rid of the non-relevant papers. For example, papers looking at the clinical presentation of Alzheimer's, for example. Once we have our final dataset, we can actually already extract some meaningful information from the text without having to look at it ourselves. So we've developed text mining techniques to extract information such as the model and outcome measures and treatments used within publications. And we've also developed text mining techniques to assess the reporting quality of those publications, as Malcolm mentioned previously as well. Interestingly, you know, we're always working towards validating these tools and making them better as well. And we have a PhD student in the lab at the moment, who's funded by the UK Reproducibility Network, and she's working on natural language processing algorithms to assess reporting quality. And interestingly, it seems that this might work better going forward as probably because the way people describe things like animals were randomised to groups or outcome assessors were blinded, it differs a lot between different publications. So we're always learning and trying to implement new techniques to make this even better. So I just wanted to show you a couple of the projects we have. So I've mentioned the one in transgenic Alzheimer's disease models, and you can follow the QR code here if you want to have a look at that website. You can scan the code. And more recently, we've applied very similar techniques to the COVID-19 literature, and you can have a look at that as well if you're interested. So finally, I also wanted to just give my reflections as being a PhD student in the Camarades group. And it's really been fantastic to do a PhD in such a collaborative environment where team science is really valued. And there really is, you know, a sort of a very top-down approach as well in terms of reproducibility and open science and using the best approaches. And it's really been, it's been a fantastic experience. And it's a very supportive environment to do this sort of work as well, so I'm very lucky. And I'm really driven to continue my research as part of the wider Camarades network. And now I'm coming to the end of my PhD. I'm trying to find funding to continue some of the work that I've just shown there, and it's proving very, very difficult. So I'm really hoping that these awards encourage funders to look upon our work more favourably and see the impact our research can have. And finally, I'd just like to say a massive thank you to the Camarades team in Edinburgh and the wider Camarades network, who have helped us do all of this work. And finally, of course, the BNA for this award and for giving us a chance to speak to everyone today. So thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin and Malcolm, for that really good presentation. I'm going to kick off with one question that's come in. And again, encourage everybody watching this to submit your questions now, either to Caitlin and Malcolm or for the wider discussion that follows. First question, why do you think that the Arrive checklist didn't achieve change?
So I guess this confused me initially, because I was, I was hoping that it would achieve a change. But I guess the way that the trial worked, it was asking authors to complete the checklist. And I think, I think some of the time, people were just sort of completing it, but not maybe fully understanding what all of the items meant, or, you know, not fully comprehending the whole, the whole thing. And I think that's, that's what's now led to the revision of the guidelines to be a bit more compact rather than the massive guidelines they were before. And I think that that's part of it. And also, I think that there's not really enough resource for journals to do all of this checking themselves. So the journal in this instance, the journal didn't check that the authors completed each of the items. And I think if they had, it may have been a different story, but it's, it's a lot to ask journal editors to do, I think.
You're on mute, Malcolm.
Schoolboy era. I think that's right. The, interestingly, the control group were asked nicely to complete a checklist, and 3% of them did. So that's what you get if you ask nicely. I think there's, there's, there's two bits of it. One is the Arrive checklist, as was, was quite complex. We operationalised it out to about 108 items that people would have to do something for. So that's quite a lot. The new Arrive guidelines have got a clearer focus on what's, everything's important, but on what's most important. The second thing is a bit more philosophical in that I think there's a difference between guidelines that are imposed externally, even if they're imposed externally by your own community, and what you hold to be important in the work that you publish and how you might judge yourself against those guidelines or those standards. And I think the more that we can own the measures against which our research is assessed, evaluated, judged, the more likely we are to work harder to increase its performance against those standards. I don't think any of us really like being told what to do.
Okay, thank you. In the In the interest of time, I'm going to invite the other panellists to join us for the wider discussion. While we wait for questions to be submitted, firstly, are there any questions that either of the other panel members wanted to sort of raise about the other talks that they've heard from the other panellists initially? Amy, you looked as though you were mulling a question.
I was thinking that, I should have thought about this throughout the whole session. Well, I was thinking, like, I think in general, what makes me reflect is how do we deal with, like, a field like neuroscience is so incredibly diverse with different kind of subfields at different levels of a different conversation with different methods and, you know, sometimes different problems, sometimes the same problems. And I think sessions like these always make me reflect how, you know, like, how do we get away from just our bubble of what we do and understanding very much what we want here to another bubble that's very different? And I guess I was interested in, you know, maybe the BNA's point of view, but other people's point of view, and how do we foster culture change that kind of combines all these different fields, but maybe also needs to differentiate them to be able to target certain things that certain people... It was like more of a comment than a question.
I think certainly, I mean, as I sort of mentioned at the start, addressing research culture within neuroscience is sort of a key part that the BNA wants to tackle as part of this work. I think sort of different areas of neuroscience, as you say, may well sort of be more open to this at the minute than others. So I think sort of when we do approach this, in part of what our work at the BNA, we've sort of tried to provide through our credibility resources so far, sort of some specific guides for areas of research. So we've got sort of guides for how people, for example, doing in vitro research might want to sort of improve credibility in their own work. But obviously, there are so many sort of different fields, sort of trying to capture it all within one message is important in one way, but it's good that we also try and target particular other specialisms within neuroscience so that we're covering the broad field. One question that's just come in, since a lot of heavy lifting is being done with early career researchers, how do we persuade more senior researchers to change their values? And this is something that certainly we're keen at the BNA to sort of really, really crack. How do we, how do we sort of get more senior researchers on board with this? Malcolm?
Yeah, it relates back to what I was complaining about earlier on. If you look around at people who are the senior researchers in this field, the likes of, now I've got this award, or we've got this team award, I could say, you know, I'm up there, I suppose, professional work in reproducibility or that, the people like Manaffo shares the same initials, if not the same taste in necktie wear, Chris Chambers and others, these are all people who are senior in their careers, largely male, largely middle-aged, who've made their name doing something else, have been worried about reproducibility and replication, and have had the seniority to be able to have that as a sideline. If you were as an early career researcher now, and this was your thing, and I hope we've got lots and lots of early career researchers that want to make this their thing, where's the career structure? Where's the fellowships that you apply for? Those of you who follow me on Twitter, not very many of you, will recall that I recently applied for a fellowship in research improvement, and the major funder to whom I applied did not have a panel that could evaluate whether that was fundable or not, because it wasn't a thing. So if this isn't a thing to our funders, there's no way we're going to be able to persuade ECRs to take this up as something that they're going to do as their main piece of work. And that, for me, is incredibly disappointing. There's all this talk about how all of this is really important, but it doesn't seem to be that important.
Would any other panellists like to jump in at this point on that question?
I guess I would say that I think for PIs to take up this sort of thing, that, you know, especially if they haven't been, just because that was kind of part of the question as well, I think really it has to be implemented at the funder and maybe institutional level as well, or journal level, all of the levels, for them to actually adopt these practices. Without, you know, rather than it being the PhD student or the early career researcher who's trying to push it, I think they have, sometimes I think it has to be kind of seen to be the norm across the field for people to take up these practices.
I think, I think just to add there, the talent pipeline, I really resonated with Malcolm, both in terms of when I applied for my fellowship, I was actively told not to mention my work in methodology and go with the content. But I think it is so crucial in many ways to build a sustainable pipeline for people who want to focus on research improvement as part of their research. I had something really good to say about it, and I think I've just really forgotten it by being annoyed at my fellowship. Oh, yeah, no, I'll get to it once I remember.
Marta, do you have any thoughts on this?
I maybe have just like an encouraging comment that I have heard from a senior researcher recently, that they felt they were falling behind with regards to reproducibility, open research. So it, once it takes on as the new norm and something that is viewed positively, it does kind of put pressure. So maybe this is really a way that will help us forward.
That's encouraging to hear.
I've got my point, sorry. I think, I think part of my hope is that if education in terms of research practice becomes more important, that we'll have more need for people who can teach that. And I think that's something that I've been slowly seeing. But naturally, we want to have people funded for the research and not for teaching the research. And I think I was very shocked when I was a graduate student, that in my departmental away day, the more or less there was a narrative that, well, once the funders make it mandatory, then we'll just employ the people who then kind of fit that new goalpost. And I felt like, where is the growing people? You know, where is the, well, we'll teach what we know will come? You know, we know it's going to be there in five or 10 or 15 years, and we'll foster our people internally. But I felt like I was always in departments where you could hire in those people once you needed them. And I felt like that was very disappointing, really. And so building that pipeline. But I think there's, it's more than just on a funder level. I think we can do things on a departmental or university level, it's just smaller. But you can make a lot of small little things, and they do make a difference, just like with reproducibility, you know, which I co-founded in my graduate school. And sometimes it feels like nothing, but then sometimes I think like, oh, we've got a hundred journal clubs, each of them might have, you know, 10 members. And then it does scale, and they will have one good conversation a year, and it might take 10 minutes, and then all of a sudden you get to a very big number. And so I think these small things like the awards, small things like lobbying your institution for changing, putting a desirable criteria in terms of open science on their, you know, on their hiring, these things do change. You know, I think sometimes we need to recognise that the things we're doing are actually making quite a difference, even if it's painful at the moment, that it's not supported in the way that we know it should be and needs to be to foster that talent.
We have probably time for one last question. So following on from the researchers changing their values, what intersectionality issues are there around who holds power and privilege in science, scientific culture that are present in this area? Not sure if...
So I could start while other people think. This is what I do, I answer the question first and talk rubbish, and then other people get a chance to think and reflect on the same answer they're going to give. So we've recently deployed the Wellcome Trust Research Culture Survey in Edinburgh, where we've also looked at the demographics of the respondents. And we've got all the different questions, some of which relate to how comfortable you are about raising issues of race and equality and diversity and inclusion, and some of them relate to issues about how would you think the current research culture impacts on the quality of research that's produced the volume of research. And interestingly, when you do a principal components analysis of the answers to those questions, these items co-segregate. So there's an intimate relationship between the ability within an institution for heterogenous workforce, working teams to combine together without being worried about discrimination or bullying and harassment, and the research culture and the quality of the research that they produce. And to see it as being something separate is wrong. And so institutions need, I think, to be very, and I like Amy's optimism, either you can say there's so much, there's so many different fights, fronts to fight on that we're never get anywhere, the corollary of which is that if we can make this little thing across here a little bit better, we might also have beneficial effects in all of these other parts of our research cultures, and little bits of action in lots of places might be helpful. I think there's very, I think the lengths that, you know, between intersectionality and the research culture are very strong and cannot be ignored.
Yeah, I think I've learned and reflected a lot about kind of who causes scientific change. And I think people, you know, just taking the list of senior people that Malcolm mentioned, I think everybody does their advocacy in different ways, you know, and everybody, and some people's advocacy is the quiet kind of getting people in the background together or getting the funders on board. Other people's advocacy is, you know, kind of getting out on the tack or, you know, getting people together in the pub, or, there's a lot of different ways of doing things. And for me, certain ways worked, you know, and that was the kind of more aggressive, let's change things, this is, you know, we need to, and then almost kind of, yeah, yeah, very us versus them. And I do reflect now with having a broader class, kind of that different advocacy, that actually doesn't work for some people that I teach. And so we need to make sure that just because, that power and privilege in science that we have, that that doesn't translate into that we have certain types of advocacy more than others, and that only talks to certain types of people. And I think it's something that is for me sometimes quite painful to realise as a teacher that I'm losing, or some people have a very different view of, you know, I set an Amy Cuddy article from the New York Times versus a reply, and I love the reply, I was like, this is, you know, and like, everybody disagreed with me. But that's the learning opportunity in the community. So I think for me, that's what I reflect on, is like, which is, what is the advocate I want to be? Maybe I change it slightly so that I don't fit the mould that I've been taught or that worked for me, but kind of make it more inclusive in that way. That's what I try to do. But naturally, we need, as Malcolm said, we need much bigger change, but you're just a small cog in a big network, and so these small changes can actually make a difference.
I'm going to have to end discussions here, I'm afraid. Thank you so much to everybody that has attended the session, and I hope you've been inspired by the work that you've heard today. Thanks again to Marta, Amy, Caitlin and Malcolm for taking part, to Sage again for sponsoring the session, and again, all of you for joining us. If you'd like to continue the discussion, do head over to the Credibility Discussion Board. We also have another credibility session tomorrow morning at nine, discussing journal impact factor called factor friction. And if you're interested in seeing more of the BNA's credibility work, go to bna credibility.org.uk. From everyone here, thanks again, and enjoy the rest of the festival.
Thanks.